At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. I will offer an invocation and then we will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. As gracious as Heavenly Father, we come here after what has been a stressful week for many. A lot of people's lives have been upended. Most important thing, Lord, is that I understand that we have had no injuries in our local community, we've had no loss of life, which is, which is just, we give you the praise for that because it could have been much, much worse. We were very blessed to have as little damage as we had, and even though it was a large amount. But, Lord, we know that all things come from you. We know that the wind, the rain, the trees falling, the power lines out, the businesses closed, all that is in your hands. We just give you thanks, Lord, for those that are here amongst us that are able to help us put our lives back together. The linemen, city employees, law enforcement, and most of all, neighbors helping neighbors. And for that, we give you thanks. We just ask that you would continue to bless us, keep your hand upon us, guide us each and every day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I move any further in the meeting, I'd just like to recognize tonight that we have Judge Branch here with us. She'll be administering the oath of office to our new police chief. I'd also like to recognize former Representative Michael Ray and his wife Kaye. We have Sheriff Davis with us tonight, former county commissioner, I believe Vice Chair, Ms. Brewer, glad to have you with us tonight, and current Chair of County Commissioners, Mr. Vernon Bryant. And also, I believe she just came in, Ms. Davis, County Commissioner. Thank you, glad to have you with us tonight. We also have, on the front row, we have Chief Wiggins' wife and his children, so we're glad to have all of you here. As we move forward, we need to adopt the business agenda, and we do have one item to remove, Item 7D, from the agenda, and we have one addition that needs to be added, a budget amendment for some new business. So if you've all had a chance to read that and understand it, we need a motion to adopt the agenda as it will be amended.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to delete Item D from the New Business Section and replace it with a Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2025.15.
Second. Okay, we have the motion by Mr. Stainback and the second by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda will be approved as it is amended. Next, I call on our senior resident Superior Court Judge, Judge Brenda Branch, to do the administration of swearing in and the Police Chief Wiggins. Did any family want to come?
You have any preference, Aunt Mayor, where you would like the Chief to stand in front of the seal or you like the seal?
Yes, I would.
I'm sure my voice can be turned out.
I bring my community out of your picture.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Glad to have you here with us tonight.
Madam Chairman, other members of the board, citizens.
Other elected officials, good afternoon or good evening, and thank you so much, boys, for having me to participate this evening. To the family of our very own, in just a few moments, our very own Chief Wiggins, welcome and congratulations.
Place your left hand on the battle rail, you right, if you would repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Lawrence Akeem Wiggins.
Lawrence Akeem Wiggins.
Accept the duties and responsibilities.
Accept the duties and responsibilities.
Of the position of Police Chief.
Of the position of Police Chief.
For the City of Roanoke Rapids.
For the City of Roanoke Rapids.
And I do solemnly swear.
And I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be.
Or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor.
And that I will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution.
With the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
And diligent.
And diligent.
And enforce the criminal laws of this state.
And enforce the criminal laws of this state.
And that I will not be influenced.
Not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As Police Chief.
As Police Chief.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome.
On behalf of the Superior Court of Halifax County, and I'm sure on behalf of the bar here with Attorney Davis, we know him as Attorney Davis, of course, he's the attorney here as well, we want to welcome you to our justice system here. We want you to reach out to us at any time you feel the need, we will be available to you. Our elected sheriff is present tonight, our elected DA is present tonight, as well as other members of our Halifax County Commissioner Board. So we are here for you, if at all, if you need us any at all. We appreciate you, to the family, again, welcome, thank you. We will require some of his time, and so thank you for allowing us to have some of his time, well, thank you in advance. Thank you so much, congratulations.
Chief Wiggins, if you'd like to comment?
I would.
Yes, sir.
Can I say, I could comment and say, Wiggins, I presume my secretary's here.
Okay, okay, okay. First, we have a presentation by the Chief.
So first, I would like to say, thank you all for being here. This is, I can't tell you how color or well that I feel with the support. I've run into many people in the community, and all have been welcoming, staff, department heads, city manager, council, everybody has just been phenomenal, extremely welcoming, helped me navigate the change from moving from South Carolina to North Carolina. And it's, it's, it's just made it so much easier, it's just so much easier. I understand this may be a first, I've been told a couple of times, and I can feel the weight of that, but I'm here for the community, nothing more, nothing less. Everything I have is for this community, and I intend to show that in my actions and in my commitment to make sure this community is a community that we all can be proud of. So with that, there's a couple of things about me that I like to convey to people. One, I truly believe in professionalism, I believe in being a master of your craft, and that brings me into this modern presentation. We've had a number of officers at Roanoke Rapids Police Department not just settle for their basic certification, but pursue training and education, in pursuit of their intermediate certification and advanced certification. And when I got here and I found out how many officers had done that work, it made me feel proud, because, you know, when the community sees us, they expect excellence, right? And I think it's just something for the community to know that the majority of the officers here have done, gone beyond the bare minimum, right? And are pursuing excellence in their craft. And so with that, I'd like to call Officer Todd Stevenson of the Roanoke Rapids Police Department. So one of the things that I've done since I've been here, and my command staff can tell you, I really try to empower not just the command staff, but every officer at every level to have ownership in the police department. We have several officers that have come to me with ideas about grants, Officer Stevenson being one of them, and my exact words to him were, write it up, you found it, write it up, pursue it, and we'll support you in any way. And he's currently, he stopped me yesterday, I was doing something, and stopped me outside and said, hey, Chief, I found this grant, and I said, what can we get with it? And, you know, he's pursuing some free equipment with grant money we don't have to match. And he did that on his own, but I put it out there, and he's not the only one, there have been others, but he took it upon himself, and that's what I want, you know? The police department is ownership. This isn't my department, this is our department, this is my city, this is our city. Same thing goes for the citizens, you know, this is our city, so when something happens, it's our collective responsibility to ensure we do whatever we can to make sure that the city is safe. And so I want to congratulate Officer Todd Stevenson on obtaining his intermediate long witness certificate from the North Carolina Department of Justice Education Training Standards.
We need a motion to approve the City Council minutes from April the 15th and the budget work session on May 6th.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 15th, 2025 regular City Council meeting and May 6th, 2025 work, budget work session minutes as drafted.
Second. Okay, the motion is by Councilman Strickland and the second is by Councilman Stainback. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, the minutes will be approved as they are presented. I call on the Finance Director for consideration of a budget amendment.
Good evening. The library received a donation in the amount of $500 for the children's program, so I'd like you to consider adoption of 2025.13 in the amount of $500.
Does anybody have any questions, the Finance Director on this? If not, we call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt budget amendment ordinance number 2025.13 in the amount of $500 for the children's program.
Okay, the motion by Councilman Jackson and the second by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, the motion will be approved. I believe you have the next couple of items also.
Yes, Mr. Justin Kerr, in a local citizen group, solicited donations and helped fundraisers to help fund a skate park in Emery Park, and the group raised $31,492.50. So I'd like you to consider adoption, budget amendment 2025.14 in the amount of $31,492.50 for the Emery Park skate park.
Okay, if there are no questions, we need a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to adopt budget amendment ordinance number 2025.14 in the amount of $31,492.50 for the Emery Park skate park.
The motion by Councilman Bell, has second to his motion, second by Mr. Jackson, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, the motion will be approved.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and so many wonderful guests. It's good to see this place full and a meeting tonight. I come to you with a consideration of extending our sweeping agreement, which is Agreement Number 11587 with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. In the past, City Council has authorized Mayor Doughty to execute an agreement with NCDOT for the city to perform routine sweeping of various streets and bridges, most specifically the Roanoke River Bridge where it crosses down here at the bottom of the hill on the river. One-year extensions have been requested and granted each year, and NCDOT is again requesting that we extend this agreement for an additional period of one year through June the 1st, 2026. Our action is, we request to extend the sweeping agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for a period of one year and to authorize Mayor Doughty to execute the attached letter.
Okay, if anybody have any questions on the amendment? If not, we need a motion to approve.
Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to extend the sweeping agreement, Agreement Number 11587, with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for a period of one year through June 1st of 2026, and to authorize Mayor Doughty to execute the attached letter.
Second. Okay, the motion is by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant and the second is by Councilman Bell. Is there any more discussion? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, the motion will be approved. Thank you, Mr. Chalker.
I've got the next one too, Mayor.
Okay.
I'm just making just a note here. Okay, I come to you next with a request for a budget amendment, and this ordinance number 2025 dot 15. We're requesting a budget amendment in the amount of $250,000 for the most recent response, emergency response, debris collection and removal for the storm that we had on Friday night. We don't currently have specific budgeted funds for an event of this size, and so I don't know if we're going to spend the entire $250,000, but we're requesting to place $250,000 into an amendment to prepare to deal with this storm. We've collected a mountain of debris, and so this is going to cost us a little bit of money. Our hopes are that we're going to get some type of declaration by the State of North Carolina through their emergency management program that would reimburse us. So the requested action is that you approve this budget amendment ordinance number 2025. One five in the amount of $250,000, and I'm sure there's probably going to be some questions and I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you can start.
I was just going to say, it's part of the city manager's report, we were going to provide you an update on the storm, so if there's any questions about what happened and the extent of it, we will address that in a couple more minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Your report?
We need a motion.
Okay, need a motion on that to approve it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025 to set a Roanoke Rapids budget amendment in the amount of $250,000 for recovery funds from the storm.
Second.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion will be approved. Ms. Rainham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to acknowledge that Item 7D was removed off of the agenda tonight for the proposed fiscal year 26 budget and budget message, and a special meeting is scheduled for next Thursday, May the 29th at 5:30 here in this room. To do that, we'll focus strictly on the budget at that time, on that date, and provide that budget to you in meeting the obligations. Our community, we are in the wake of severe storm that did occur on Friday night, May the 16th of 2025, and most of us in the city staff and other individuals in the community haven't really had a chance to take a break and reflect on what had happened yet, and we went straight into response mode, and want to take a minute to reflect on that and also the resilience and commitment that exists that was demonstrated by our city staff and team of professionals and partners throughout the community and the citizens themselves. People really stood up and looked out for their neighbors, they looked out for each other, and it just is a reminder that we are a community. Just want to extend a heartfelt expression of gratitude for those unparalleled efforts of our city employees, the first responders, the utility providers, and various state and local agencies, Halifax County Emergency Management as well, and the volunteers. I don't want to go through, I don't want to miss someone in particular, but, so I won't be naming them all by name, but their swift action and unwavering dedication in the aftermath of the storm not only mitigated potential impacts, but also showcased the strength and solidarity that defined this great community. Our city employees, they worked tirelessly throughout the event. Many were here Friday evening or into Saturday morning until about 2:00 a.m., and were back here just a few hours later to continue their efforts when the sunlight was there for better safer conditions. Our city employees, really, they worked to ensure the public safety, to maintain order, and helped to restore some normalcy. Today, riding around, you may not have known something had happened other than some leaning trees and some cut trees on the ground, but our city employees embody the spirit of public service, and they do so with every task that they undertake. There's a lot of invisible work that exists, but there, I'm very proud to be a part of this organization and the team that supports this community and the City Council as well. Our first responders had a lot of courage that night, it was very dangerous Friday night, and especially Saturday too, with power outages, internet outages, and everyone's curious to know what's going on or what happened in the aftermath of these events. And the public safety was our most important priority at that time, and we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding as restrictions had to be put into place, and they were done so really to help keep people safe. Cars were driving through intersections without stopping, children were out on scooters and bikes, and there were electrical wires hanging, and so it was really pretty scary, and so we were able to get through that event without any personal injuries. We do understand that there are some houses that experienced some damage, some more substantial than others, and as the trees are being pulled away, we are still getting some reports of some damages and things like that, so our damage assessment efforts continue right now, but the actions of all have really been critical in safeguarding the well-being of our citizens, and I just want to say thank you to everyone, and especially to the utility providers. They showed up on scene, they called in extra help. Electricity and communications, internet, you take those away and you'll see some panic set in, but they really highlighted their efforts and disposable role during the times of crisis here. Just want to express my gratitude for the cooperation, and our staff, our responders, and utility providers, they deserve the recognition. I know a lot of times they say, you know, I'm doing my job, but those essential services help to resume things back to what are new normal, and so we come back stronger as a result of that. Our teams learn to work best together, we come together and performed, and for many of the city employees, even our leadership staff, we have new faces, and so it's a first time experience for us all, and we learned on the go and we did the best we can, and I'm just, I'm very proud of everyone's efforts through that, who stepped up. Everyone had a part in it, but I just want to say that I appreciate what was displayed, and then also want to ask for, I guess, Public Works Director Chalker, do you want to share a few things about the storm event and, I guess, some of the others as well? We still have the state of emergency. But there's, we still have the state of emergency open at this time to help collect data for our records, and so we will be ending that, there are no restrictions right now, but that will come to an end here shortly.
So very quickly, Monday morning, we tried to pull together some stats. We had some media and also some staff people that were requesting some information, and what we found out, when we came in Friday evening and into Saturday, we received about 33 reports of trees down, damaged power lines, streets blocked, we had 16 alleys blocked, and we spent between Friday and Saturday about 397 personnel hours, that's everybody's hours added up together, working on what seemed to be an insurmountable task. It was, it looked like Armageddon in some of these neighborhoods, it really looked rough. I'm very proud of our, all of our employees and all of our departments, I can't say that enough. We were out in the beginning of it, and we saw firemen joining us, we saw policemen there with us, the sheriff's office, Roanoke Valley Rescue Squad, so it felt really good to see that on the ground. But I'm proud to announce now that we only have two alleys remaining blocked, all streets have been cleared for at least partial traffic. We've got two streets that are just partially blocked, but that'll be ratified first thing tomorrow morning. Captain Phillips, we're going to be in your alley tomorrow morning, we're going to make something happen. We'll get there. And then there's one other downtown, if you know where the Turtleback House is, then that alley is currently blocked. If you don't know, you need to get a look at the Turtleback House before it falls. I've been told a couple of times, that's one of the oldest homes in town, so, but it was a tremendous effort. I mentioned in the budget request, there's a pile of trees and limbs and leaves at Public Works in that field, and I commented today, every time I come down Henson Street, it's taller, it's wider. We did get that piece of property permitted Monday morning with an emergency request to DEQ. You can't just go piling up a bunch of storm debris where you want to, because if you do, you might have to move it. We've learned that over the years, so we did get that permitted, it was a very quick process, and we do plan to grind that where it sits on site and to immediately haul it away, so it won't be hanging around once we start processing it. If there's any other questions, specific questions you may have, I'd be glad to answer them, but, but once again, thank you to Dominion and the crews they sent in here to help us on the ground, because we've got trees down with power lines in them, and they've got power lines down with trees in them, and you've got to work together to disassemble that safely without getting somebody electrocuted.
I'd just like to also say that we received a call from the county offering any support that they might offer, so we were very appreciative of that, and also I think we received some hour of service from the forestry.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry to leave them out, you're exactly right. North Carolina Forestry Service, they sent several crews in here at the request of our fire chiefs through emergency management, thank you for that, and they were very, very helpful on the ground.
So it makes you feel good when that many people come to help you when you're in a bind, so we appreciate all of it. Thank you, Mr. Chalker. Finance report?
So for April 2025, year-to-date expenditure, year-to-date revenues totaled 17.3 million, year-to-date expenditures totaled 15.8 million, so revenues exceeded expenditures by 1.5 million, which is, we're at 76.7% of the budget year. We still have avalorm for May and June, motor vehicle for May and June, sales and use tax for March, April, May and June, hold homeless for March, April, May and June, utility franchise tax, the quarterly June payment, B and one for May, we normally receive that in May, and then the residential and commercial silo waste for May and June. So I feel comfortable that we will be in budget for this current year.
Does anybody have any questions, Finance Director? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council this evening? I'd just like to make one comment that was, had to do with the skateboard park. It was a Herculean effort, I guess that's the word to use, that the cur boy, or man, had done to raise all that money, you know, he came, sat here before us about a year or so ago and said he wanted to get a skateboard park, and, you know, we told him how much money it was going to cost, and he was like, well, I'm going to raise it, and he didn't, you know, raise it all, obviously, but I told him if he would put forth a strong effort, I felt like that he would be able to get some help from different resources, and he obviously, he and some other people also had put in a lot of time and effort to raise $31,000, and I'm appreciative of the other people that have put money into that too, to make it look like it's going to become a reality. And the other thing I'd like to comment on is what Chief Wiggins said about his officers. It does make you proud, because we know that the police department is not in it to get rich, they're not, you know, making a ton of money, so they're obviously interested in making this a career so they can help the communities that they live in. So when they take their time and away from their family to get more education and, you know, just receive these certificates and diplomas, it makes them feel better, I think, and it makes our police department look much more professional. So we're very fortunate to have a police department like we do have in a town the size of Roanoke Rapids, so I appreciate it from all of you all. If there is no more business that needs to come before the council tonight, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stainback.
Second.
Second by Mr. Strickland.
Second by Mr. Strickland.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We stand adjourned.